Evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Helotis City Council. It's August 28th, 2014, and we're underway at 7:00 PM. Before we get started on the agenda, I would like to request that if any of you have a cellphone or other electronic communication device, that you please turn it to off, silent, or vibrate. And if you have a need to text or carry on a conversation with someone else in the room, if you would, please just go into the hallway or outside. We'd appreciate it so that the meeting will not be disturbed. We'll start off tonight's agenda with our invocation, and tonight, Councilmember Bies will be handling that part of the agenda, and then we will follow that with the pledge to the American and Texas flag. So if you would please stand for the invocation and the pledges.
Let us give thanks for all the blessings, opportunities, and challenges you have given us. Guide us with your strength and wisdom so we can make the right decisions for all the citizens of Helotis. As we continue with the budget planning process, allow us to be fair to our employees along with doing what is right to keep our city viable for years to come. Can you also bless us with some rain so our farmers and ranchers can provide for us? For those that are not able to be with their family and loved ones because of military service, we pray for your quick and safe return. May we give our best always and be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and respected Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the D. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Okay, we have three public hearings tonight, and Agenda Item Number Two is the first public hearing, and we're going to open this public hearing at 7:02. And this public hearing is to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Helotis, Texas approving appropriations for the City of Helotis Economic Development Corporation's fiscal year ending 2015, operating in capital budgets beginning October 1, 2014, and ending September 30, 2015, to support the EDC's programs. Projects as defined by Article 5190.6 of the Development Corporation Act of 1979, Sections 2 and 4B of Vernon's Texas Civil Statutes, and cooperatives authorizing the City Administrator and EDC Executive Director to take all necessary steps to implement the provisions of this resolution, incorporating recitals, providing for severability, and adopting an effective date. Grace, did we have anyone sign up to speak? Okay. We had no one sign up to speak, so we're going to close this one, this public hearing at 7:03. And we will open Item Number Three, the next public hearing, also at 7:03. This public hearing is to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on proposed City of Helotis, Texas fiscal year ending 2015 budgets, including but not limited to the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, Capital Replacement Fund, Dispatch Proprietary Fund, Emergency Medical Service Proprietary Fund, Municipal Court Security and Technology Funds, Public Access Channel Fund, Police Training and Education Fund, and School Safety Fund budgets. Grace? No one? Okay, we're going to close this public hearing at 7:04, and we will open our last public hearing, also at 7:04. And this public hearing is to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on the adoption of the proposed tax rate for the tax year 2014, ad valorem property tax rate. Anybody? Okay, we will close, this will call it 7:05. That brings us to our open session. Next item is citizens to be heard. Grace, anyone sign up? Okay, no one signed up for citizens to be heard, so we will move on to the consent agenda. And before we move to the consent agenda and get into the rest of our items, I would like to remind the council to please speak as much as you can into the microphones, remembering that we are running live on Channel 21 of Time Warner. If anyone's listening in, we want them to be able to hear us, and also it helps on the recording. And I would like to make sure that you saw what should have been on the dais at your place. We had a minor change on the minutes on Item Number 11. It's highlighted there at the top in the fourth paragraph, just we added with City Council consensus when we suspended the rules and moved that item to, I guess that was Item 12, we moved it to the 29th spot. So that being said, and for just clarification to you folks that are in the audience, a consent agenda in our type of meeting is intended to move the meeting along more efficiently, and it is made up of generally a number of items that are considered fairly routine by the staff and myself, and the intention is for council to move, and second, a motion to approve the consent agenda items as a whole. However, if there's a question by a council member that can be answered fairly briefly, we will address that question, and if a council member would like to pull an item from the consent agenda for full discussion, they can request that it be pulled, and we will do so and move it down into the main part of the agenda under Items for Individual Consideration. So at this time, I'll ask council if there are any questions on any item on the consent agenda, and tonight that's Items 6 through 9, or if there's a request to pull an item. Anybody? Okay, there being no questions and no requests for full discussion on the item, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 6 through 9 as written.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve consent agenda items 6 through 9 as written.
We have a motion from Fredericks. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Fredericks and a second from Bies to approve consent agenda items 6 through 9. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Consent agenda items 6 through 9 are approved. That takes us to Item Number 10. And the reason that this is on our individual items is because one of the positions, and this is for the TML Intergovernmental Risk Crew Board of Trustees, there is one contested spot, so we figured that you guys could decide whether you wanted to have us put the check mark next to the incumbent or the challenger. So I would ask for a motion and a second to open this item for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we discuss and take action on Agenda Item Number 10.
We have a motion from Bies, a second.
I'll second that.
Second from blue. And this is to discuss and take action, so Bert, it's your motion. Would you care to have any input?
Well, I looked up both these people on the Internet and tried to find out as much as I could about both of them. It seems to me that they're both very qualified individuals. My opinion is I'm gonna, I'm leading with, or thinking that I'm going to go and vote for this Mr. Vargas. He seems to have a lot of experience. He's got 33 years of municipal experience, but Ms. Stringfellow also has some good credentials. But after looking at both, I decided to go with Mr. Vargas.
Okay, Alex?
I don't have anything.
Nothing? Well, Cindy?
I don't have anything.
So would your motion then could be amended to include casting the council's vote for Mr. Peter Vargas for Place Four?
That's right.
Okay. So our motion has been amended to approve the election ballot here and to put our check mark next to the incumbent, Peter Vargas, Place Four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and we will cast the vote accordingly. That takes us to Item Number 11, discussion on the proposed City Council budget. So Rick, if you would, run us through the updated changes that have been made since our last meeting, and we will then have discussion and questions.
All right, good evening. I wanted to take you through your budget notebook to see, to show you what was amended from the last time the budget was presented to council. It should, the changes should be located on your dais if you have not incorporated them into your notebook already. If you would please go to Tab Number Six. Tab Number Six includes the Salary Personnel Chart. The amendments that were made to the Salary Personnel Chart from the last time that you saw this chart are primarily on the health insurance. We did receive rerated insurance, or re-rate, insurance re-rates from United Healthcare, and they were the lowest bids that came in out of Humana, Aetna, United Healthcare, and Blue Cross Blue Shield, correct? And so we have incorporated those numbers into this budget. Now, if you recall, we are proposing to drop from the 100% plan to the 80/20. So the changes in here do include the 80/20 plan with a lower deductible for employees. I do have Barbara Patterson here. She is with Crandall &amp; Associates, and after I go through the budget document, I'm going to have her go through the four different options that are available to employees. In the past, we've had three options available for employees. We've added a fourth option because the dependent coverage from the Affordable, it's primarily the result of the Affordable Care Act, has gone up considerably. And so we added a fourth plan in order to lower the cost of dependent coverage for those who utilize dependent coverage. The employee additionally, what she will go over was included in the revised, in the revisions, and that is included here on the sheet. It details the four different plans that are being offered to employees. If you would then go to Budget or the Tab Number Seven, please. This is the General Fund Budget, and I'm going to go through each of the major line items and explain what has changed over the last present budget presentation to you. I can tell you that generally throughout this entire General Fund Budget, that nothing significant has changed. It simply has been altered because of revenues that are coming in or because expenditures that have gone out. But there are no noticeable differences in any one of these departments' budgets, other than, as I discussed, the healthcare figures have gone down because of United Healthcare bid. Walking on the income side, under ad valorem tax revenue, that has decreased $1,052. Non-property tax revenue, which consists primarily of sales tax revenue, has increased $2,833. Franchise tax revenue has decreased $15,287, and other contract revenue has remained neutral. License and fee revenue, which consists primarily of building permits, re-inspections, signed permits, things of that sort, has decreased by $7,755. Court fine and fee revenue has decreased by $6,136. Miscellaneous income revenue has decreased $1,305, and as we discussed before, we have included dispatch and EMS revenue into the General Fund Budget, and that went up $3,850. Total income is now at $5,684,876, which is down from 5.709 million. So it is not a significant decrease in revenue from the presentation two weeks ago. Under the expenses, the City Council expenditures have been decreased by $126. Administration has gone down $4,428. City Secretaries expenditures has decreased $697. Municipal Court is down $6,282. Human Resources expenditures remain neutral. Development Services expenditures have increased $2,335. Animal Control, Public Works, Code Enforcement expenditures have decreased $2,200. Buildings and Grounds expenditures have increased by $3,200, and Police Department expenditures have decreased by $6,178. Fire Department expenditures have decreased by $3,708, and EMS expenditures have decreased by $2,990. Lastly, Dispatch expenditures have decreased by $3,774. So as you can see, total expenditures are now at $5,684,876, which is, equals total income that is expected. The expenditures have gone down a total of $24,850 overall. And looking at the bottom of the budget that discusses the General Fund balance, the General Fund balance as proposed in the budget was to remain neutral. To date, as of August 25th, we are up $323,542. By the end of this fiscal year, we're anticipated to be up $58,419, and the same goes for the General Fund Budget, or the ending fund budget for next fiscal year, which would be at
We'll go ahead and...
Oh, I'm going to go to the different. I still have someone.
Very good.
Going ahead now to Tab Number Eight, under the Budget Notebook, Tab Number Eight, Update. This is the Interest and Sinking Fund Budget. Essentially, you have an increase here of $50,870. The increase there is from ad valorem revenue that is projected to balance out the budget at the end of the fiscal year. If you recall, the last presentation included a deficit of $50,870 and some odd cents, so we have balanced that under ad valorem revenue and adjusted the amount of ad valorem that is going to M&amp;O, which is Maintenance and Operating, and Interest and Sinking. Consequently, expenditures have remained neut, well, excuse me, expenditures have remained neutral, and our total funding, ending fund balance as of September 30 of 2015 is now at zero rather than $50,000 in the whole. Switching to Item Number Nine, or Tab Number Nine, this is on the Capital Replacement Fund. The Capital Replacement Fund has increased under its income by $30,109, which is primarily related to a transfer in that the Economic Development Corporation decided to put forth of $30,000 into that account because they are expecting overruns related to the water and sewer line, given the fact that there will be some additional work that is required for the lift station. So they have transferred in $30,000 from their budget. Under the expenditure side, that has increased $121,119. Again, if you recall, the last budget, we said that the EDC was expected to spend the $350,000, which is the contract with L&amp;B Engineering. Well, we now know because of, we will not meet the September deadline of finishing final design for that, and so we are projecting at year-end to have $258,156 expended out of that account, which leaves the balance of $121,600 for next fiscal year. Switching to Tab Number Ten. Tab Number Ten includes Municipal Court Security and Municipal Court Technology. Starting first with security, income is expected to remain neutral, and expenditures are expected to decrease by $158. It still is balanced at the end. Municipal Court Technology, income is expected to remain the same, and expenditures have increased $633. Again, the fund is balanced at zero. Switching to Tab Number Eleven. Tab Number Eleven is the PEG, or Public Access Fund. Income is expected to remain stable at $15,058. We have increased the expenditures by $3,809, making expected expenditures next year of $20,519. The ending fund balance has remained the same, which is zero. Switching to Tab Twelve. Tab Twelve is Police Training and Education. There are no revenues expected for that account, simply because we do not collect that fee anymore as a part of our municipal court collections. Training expenditures therefore are expected to be $5,089, which would deplete that account to zero, and that fund, if it is spent, would essentially go away for next fiscal year, or the subsequent fiscal year. Tab Thirteen. Tab Thirteen is regarding school safety. Income is expected to remain the same at $9,730. Expenditures were increased by $922. This still does include the sidewalk for Leslie Road to accommodate students at Oak Hunter High School. Now, under Tab Thirteen additionally, you should see Budget Notebook new tabs. If you recall during the presentation, we did discuss creating a fee. Essentially, it's a user fee for the household hazardous waste collection events that we have. As we discussed, Alamo Area Council of Governments has approved grants through 2015, but they will likely not approve grants, or they will approve smaller dollar amount grants for the City of Helotis because we have become sort of a repetitive user of grants. They want us to generate our own money in order to fund our own events. And so we have taken the household hazardous waste component out of the income side of the General Fund and actually opted to create a new fund, since it is specifically for one type of activity, and I've created the Household Hazardous Waste Fund. There have, so you see dedicated revenues of $15,756, and you'll see biennial collection event of zero. Why zero? Well, first off, we already are going to, we already have grant money for this next fiscal year and the following fiscal year through ACOG. However, these events cost between $30,000 and $40,000, and so we need to let this account generate income, assuming council approves that fee. We will need to let it accumulate that revenue in order to have, host our own events. And we are assuming that at the $1.50 rate that we discussed at the last meeting, that it would need to be a biennial event because that's how much time it will take to generate enough money to host that event.
May I have a question about the fee?
Yes.
How is, if we approve this fee, how is it going to be collected?
It would be collected on the C-6 bill.
Okay, so everyone would pay for it despite, even those who would do not use the service?
That is correct. As proposed, that is correct. It would be $1.50 every quarter for all residential, and 50 cents every month for commercial. Switching to the next one under that new budget items. We have opted to go ahead and establish funds for the remaining restricted funds that we have within our bank accounts. The first one, and these are very nominal, the Police Department forfeiture federal funds, there are $0 in there right now, but if there is a forfeiture, it should go into this specified fund. In the past, we essentially haven't included them in the General Fund budgets, but trying to expand or improve our budget, we're trying to go ahead and create all the funds that are specifically restricted. Police Department, switching to the next one, the federal forfeiture, again, that's zero. State forfeiture, there are no funds, or there's nominal funds in that account, and so that is essentially zero at this time. The Police Department Explore Post, that is a fiduciary fund, and what that means is that the city doesn't maintain direct control over that fund. It's rather the organization and the police officer who's in charge of that organization maintains signature, signatory authority on those accounts, and so nonetheless, we've included them because we are the fiduciary for those funds. They're in the City of Helotis's name, even though we can't spend them, rather the program has to spend them. Income is expected at zero, and the expenditures, we, a general premise is to deplete all of the funds. The expenditures are $2,783. And those are all of the new funds that we are proposing. I'm going to turn it now over to Barbie. If you would, Barbie, come up and I have your presentation.
What I would like to do is let Ms. Patterson make the presentation, and then we'll open it for discussion and questions. So if you have questions, just make a note of them, and we'll go from there. Welcome, and please state your name, who you represent, and then have at it.
My name is Barbara Patterson. Most people call me Barbie. I've worked with Crandall &amp; Associates, and we have had the pleasure of working with the City of Helotis on employee benefits for quite some time. I've been actually on the account for the past six years. So just like to go ahead and state quite often that we really value the city as a client, appreciate your business, and thank you for allowing us to help you. So as Rick talked about, we've kind of had a couple of tough years looking at your renewals. We moved your health insurance plan to Humana in 2011 because of attractive rates. In 2010, we had a great renewal. In 2013, we got a renewal that was initially 50%. It was a hard hit. It was driven by claims. The claims loss ratio, which is paid claims divided by premiums that have been received, was over 100%. So in that year, Humana paid out more in claims for the participants here than they took in in premium. We were able to negotiate that down in 2003. We got it down to about 30%, just by the good graces and honest, literally, my boss, Shirley Crandall, the owner of the agency, literally called the president of Humana and said, "You always say, when we come up to Green Bay for, you know, our event week, you always say, 'If you need something, call me while I'm calling.'" Okay? So last year, we really didn't have any competitive rates from the other carriers. Your claims experience was acting against you, and so our best option was to renew with Humana. We were able to negotiate that increase down to a 30% increase about, I think, instead of a 50% increase. But in order to stay within budget, that meant that we had to make some plan changes. So we increased deductibles, we made things work so that the premiums were affordable to your employees and also affordable to the city. So this year, when the renewal came around, and again, we were faced with a 50% rate increase, actually 53, we went out to bed again. And this time around, however, we were able to get competitive rates from United Healthcare, Blue Cross, and Aetna. So our standard procedure with that is to then go back to the incumbent because we feel that consistency is important, and we don't like to move you from one carrier to another very often unless we just absolutely have to. So we always like to give our incumbent carrier a last look and say, "Okay, guys, here's the competition. These are all comparable plans to the plans that we have in force. These are the rates from your competitors. What, are you going to move with that?" And the response that we got from Humana was, "Absolutely not. We're not going to move from it." So I met with the mayor and Mr. Schroeder. We decided that the best option for the city would be to move to United Healthcare because they had the lowest rates for comparable plans. So that's kind of where we got, where we are today. Again, Rick mentioned that the city decided to move off of providing funding for the top plan, which is currently a $3,000 deductible plan with 100% coverage after that, and move down and fund instead an 80% plan with a lower deductible of $2,000. So we put that plan in place, and that's kind of like a new plan, I guess you could say, that we've added. They wanted to keep the $3,000 deductible 100% plan as an option for employees who like that coverage, and if they're willing to pay the additional money to have that coverage, they can keep their current plan, or a plan very similar to it. We also continued with a kind of what we called a middle plan before. It's a $5,000 deductible plan, and this was offered last year just to try to offer an affordable alternative for people who had families, who needed family coverage, but they couldn't afford the very rich benefit, well, I should say, the dependent premiums on the very rich benefit that the city was providing for the employees. So what we did there was we allowed the employees to go to this $5,000 deductible plan, and whatever money the city saved on the employee-only premium was directed towards the dependent premiums to help them cover the cost of covering the dependents. So that was an option, and we came up with a plan this year that's also a $5,000 deductible. So, that was an option and we came up with a plan this year that's also a $5,000 deductible. However, instead of 80 percent coverage after the deductible's satisfied, it has 50 percent coverage and I can get into the reasons why we did that moving on but, and then the last plan that we're offering is the same or very comparable to the plan that was offered last year. It's a $5,000 deductible HSA qualified plan. And so, what an HSA qualified plan is, it means it's a qualified high deductible health plan. It has to have a minimum deductible to be qualified and it also has to have no first dollar coverage for anything other than for benefit care in order to be considered qualified for a person to open up a health savings account. So, the health savings account is a tax favored account where you can contribute on a pre-tax basis through payroll deduction, employees can. Or if you contributed just by writing a check to your HSA, it would be an above the line tax deduction on your tax return. The money in the account grows tax free and distributions from the account come out tax free as long as they're spent on qualified health expenses. That type of account doesn't have a use it or lose it rule like a flexible spending account would. You'd have to use the money by the end of the year or you lose it. This can literally build for years and years and years and eventually be a large sum of money if people continue to fund it. Okay? So anyway, that's just a little bit about the process. Now, just to show you, the city is paying for the employee's premium 100 percent of option two which is the $2,000 deductible 100 percent plan. If you can give me the next slide. This kind of looks like a massive maze but I just wanted to give you all some idea of how the three plans compare. The first three options, 1 through 3, are all plans that have co-pays so that if your employees or their dependents go to the doctor, they have a co-pay for office visits, they have a co-pay for prescription drugs, they have a co-pay for convenience care, for urgent care, for emergency room. So all, in all those situations, the deductible's not going to come into play, they're just going to pay their co-pay. The last plan which is the high deductible plan, you can see there that there are no co-pays and that everything with the exception of permanent care will be applied to deductible. It doesn't matter whether it's an office visit or a prescription drug that you had filled or whatever you did, those charges will be applied to deductible until the deductible's satisfied and then the plan will begin picking up expenses. So basically what we did is we just gave them a wide option of co-pay plans with varying deductibles. The second line down, you can see that's their co-insurance. So once the deductible's been satisfied, on option one, the plan takes over 100 percent for the remainder of the calendar year. On option two, the employee would be responsible for 20 percent and United Healthcare will pay 80 percent until the maximum annual out of pocket has been met. On plan three, they split it 50-50 until we get to the maximum annual out of pocket. And then on option four, it's again 80-20. Okay? The next slide, line down is the annual out of pocket and what might look funny to you is that we just said we have a $3,000 deductible on option one with 100 percent co-insurance so why is the annual out of pocket $4,500? And that's because under the new laws of healthcare, the carriers have to count everything that you pay towards your maximum out of pocket. So on the current plan that we have right now, even though it's a $3,000 deductible 100 percent plan, the employee's co-pays for office visits, prescription drugs, urgent care, emergency, those co-pays go on to infinity and there's no limit to what, how many times, how many co-pays they have to pay. So they could have satisfied the deductible but they still have to pay co-pays. Under this plan, once the co-pays add up to that additional $1,500, then even if they go get a prescription filled, the plan will pay 100 percent. Okay? On option two, once the deductible's satisfied, the employee's going to pay 20 percent and the max out of pocket on this plan is $6,000. So, everything counts towards the max out of pocket, the $2,000 deductible, the 20 percent co-insurance they're paying. Every time they get a prescription filled, go to a doctor's office, pay a co-pay for anything, all of those things will accumulate towards that $6,000 and once that's been satisfied, then they will be in 100 percent coverage for the rest of the year. Option three, again, $5,000 deductible, 50 percent and the max out of pocket here is $6,350. So even though, you know, a lot of people look at that and they'll go, "My God, a 50 percent plan, that's not very good." But it really is a very good plan because we have a max out of pocket of only $350 more than the plan that the city's paying for. So if you're really looking at a catastrophic situation, worst case scenario, $6,350 for anybody that's on this plan. But the premium savings for the employee on their dependents is substantial. One other thing I want to point out about this plan is that even though it has the same deductible as last year, even though the co-insurance is now 50 percent rather than 80 percent, it's the plan that saw the biggest increase in what the employees are going to have to pay for their dependents. And the reason for that is that under the current plan, their 20 percent co-insurance applied until they, until it added up to $3,000. So they have a $5,000 deductible plus they had to pay another $3,000 in co-insurance plus unlimited co-pays. And so it had a much higher out of pocket limit. This year, you know, the carriers are basically handcuffed and they have, they can't have an out of pocket limit greater than 60 through 50. So we knew that these plans that had higher out of pocket limits were going to see substantial increases because we had to lower the exposure for the insured and of course, increase the exposure for the carrier. Again, talking about these three plans, one of the cool things that United Healthcare has introduced is the no kid co-pay. So if you take, if your employees take their child to the doctor for any reason, children age 18 and under will not have a co-pay for a primary care physician. So that would include family practice doctor, pediatrician, OB-GYN or an internal medicine doctor. And actually, I had employees applaud that today in the meeting so I thought that was kind of cool. The co-pays for a primary care office visit for adults is $30 on option one and two, $35 on option three. Right below that, the specialist co-pay for an office visit, again, with Humana, we only had one specialist co-pay, it was just a higher co-pay. United Healthcare has actually designated some physicians as, some specialists as tier one specialist because of their record as far as being efficient and effective and treating things effectively. So, when your employees go to a specialist who is a tier one designated specialist for United Healthcare, they're going to pay the lower primary care co-pay when they see that specialist. If the specialist doesn't have the tier one designation, then they will pay the higher co-pay of $60 on plans one and two and $70 on plan three. Moving down the chart, convenience care. When we're talking about convenience care, we're talking about these little retail clinics that are popping up. So, I noticed today when I pulled in, right across the street CVS Pharmacy's getting ready to open up a Minute Clinic. So, United Healthcare has a national contract with CVS pharmacies for their Minute Clinics. They're in-network. So as soon as that Minute Clinic is open, your employees will have the option to run over there and for a primary care co-pay, they can be seen at the convenience clinic. Other convenience clinics in town are ready clinics and those are, can be found in certain HEB stores. So that's always an option for them. Urgent care, that's going to be if they go to a Texas Med Clinic or Quality Urgent Care or there's many urgent care centers around that they could go to. The co-pay across all three camps, plans for urgent care is $75. And then finally, emergency room, if they do have a true emergency and we really need to go to the emergency room for that, the co-pay is $300 on the first option but only $250 on the option that the city's paying for and then the lower option. Can you back up once? And so, that's kind of all the co-pay situation and then all those lines that we talked about on the high deductible plan is just a matter of, the deductible's been satisfied, the employee would pay 20 percent until they've satisfied the max out of pocket of $6,350. So you see those last two plans had the exact same maximum out of pocket. The HSA qualified plan is cheaper because it doesn't have the co-pays involved. So, it's kind of a matter of, this is our maximum number, this is the maximum number allowed by law. It's a matter of, how soon do you want help? Do you want the lower deductible to get help sooner or do you want to take more of the expense on, at the beginning and pay lower premiums down the line? Great. Next slide. These are the pharmacy benefits for all plans. The pharmacy benefit on options one through three, all of the co-pay plans is exactly the same, doesn't matter which plan you're on. So on those plans, there's no separate deductible for prescription drugs. For a 31 day supply at retail, the participants will pay $15 for a tier one drug, $40 for tier two, $75 for tier three. If they go to a mail order pharmacy, they can get up to a 90 day supply and it saves them a little mon, a little bit of money because they, it's, or two and a half times the 30 day co-pay. So, tier one is $3,750, tier two is 100 and tier three is $1,875. And then finally, on the specialty pharmacy, these are the drugs that are quite expensive. If it's a tier one, it's still a $15 co-pay but tier two and three, you can see the co-pays are substantially higher, 100 and 300 dollars a month. Keep in mind that some of these specialty medications can run $2,000, $2,500 a month. So, it's still an awesome benefit to be able to get it for 300 bucks. On the high deductible plan, the deductible is integrated with medical. So again, all your pharmacy charges and all your medical charges will add up until you be satisfied that $5,000 deductible. And then once that's been satisfied, the employee would pay 20 percent for their medical charges but on the prescription drug site, they begin to pay a co-pay. So the co-pays for are $10 tier one, $35 for tier two, $60 for tier three at retail, $25, $8,750 and $150 at the mail order pharmacy and then $10, 100 and 300 for specialty medications. And is that, I think I put a couple of extra slides just in there that I went through with the employees if you want to go to the next one. This one's very important. The plans that we are presenting to your employees are called EPO plans. So that's called an exclusive provider organization rather than a preferred provider organization which is what we're accustomed to with a PPO. So your PPO plans have in-network and out-of-network benefits. However, we noticed that very seldom does anybody ever veer out of the network and if they do veer out of the network, they never come anywhere close to satisfying the out-of-network deductible nor the out-of-network out of pocket. So we're able to save about, I wanted to say it was about 5 to 7 percent difference between the exact same plans with and without out-of-network coverage. So we opted for the savings thing, let's drive everybody, most of the employees are going to stay in-network anyway. So this is a perfect situation to save a little bit more money. And it's a very popular type of plan that's coming up now. So, of course, when we're talking about emergency care, if somebody's in an emergency situation, we don't want them to stop, get out their phone, see where's the next nearest network emergency room. We want them to get to emergency and be taken care of immediately. So, emergency services are going to be covered the same out of network as they would be covered in-network. Any other out-of-network services are just not covered by the plan. So these are things that I wanted your employees to know, things to know about UHC. Deductible and co-insurance credit, when you talk about people that have already satisfied good portions of 3 and $5,000 deductibles, the panic on their face when they think about, "Oh my God, we're changing carriers, starting October 1, do I have to start all over?" And the answer is no. United Healthcare is going to give your employees credit for any amounts of deductible that they've paid under the Humana plan or for any co-insurance that they've paid under the Humana plan. So what we'll do is we'll request an accumulator report, broken down by member from Humana, right at the end of September that we can then provide to United Healthcare and they'll load up all those numbers so that an employee who has a $3,000 deductible plan who's already met that deductible won't have to pay anymore towards deductible under this new plan. I put a little note there that it applies only to individuals that are insured under the City of Palotes plan. So if we have an employee who has a spouse that works for some, you know, that's had coverage elsewhere and is now going to come onto your plan in October, that coverage isn't going to transfer over and you won't get deductible credit for that, only the people that have coverage with you. Out of pocket limits, just a reminder that the out of pocket limits now include deductibles and co-insurance and then beginning October 1, anything that your employees pay for co-pays for prescription drugs, office visits, et cetera, will also accumulate towards their out of pocket limit. Next slide. This is just to recap, the no kid co-pay for primary care physician is a new benefit for them. The convenience care clinic at a primary care co-pay is an extra convenience for them if they can't get into their primary care doctor. Having the two-tier co-pay for specialists, being able to pay a lower co-pay if you go to a tier one specialist is also an added benefit. This is something I just went through with them with regard to their prescription drugs. There are medications that require prior authorization and I explained to them today that if you're on one of those medications and you've already done your prior authorization with Humana, unfortunately, you're going to have to do it again because United Healthcare doesn't have record of what happened with Humana. So they know that they're going to have to jump through that hoop again. There's also certain maintenance medications that they may be taking and I gave them a list of all the things that fall into this category, letting them know that the first two refills at retail would be kind of courtesy filled at retail and then will automatically be transferred to the mail service pharmacy unless the employee picks up the phone and calls in and says, "United, I don't want mail service, leave me at retail." And then they'll certainly do that and that will last, that override will last for a year. And then the last piece of that, the cash price override, sometimes you may go to the pharmacy and maybe you go to ATP and they have those little generic programs like you can get a $4 generic, right? And so they'll say, "Well, I'm not going to run this through your insurance because you can get it cheaper through our discount program." Well, that's awesome. Go ahead and give them the cheaper price with the discount program but we also want them to run that $4 through United Healthcare so the employee gets credit for that towards their out of pocket maximum. Excellent. That's it? Okay. So this is also, United Healthcare has a website, myuhc.com. The employees can go in, they can register, they can get information about their plan online, about their claims experience online, find network providers, et cetera, print a new ID card if they've lost theirs, request a new ID card, all these things they can do online. And then United also, United Healthcare also has an app called Health For Me so they can download that app to their smartphone and if they're sitting in the doctor's office and they need, "Oh my God, I forgot my ID card," they can just log in and the ID card, you know, they can pick it up on their phone, look at claims. Maybe if they're at the pharmacy and they want to price a drug and find out, you know, how much this is actually going to cost, they can actually check drug prices on the phone and then, you know, it's just information in the palm of your hand again. So, I think that's the last slide if I'm not mistaken. So, that's basically the nuts and bolts of the medical plans that are being offered to your employees. Do you all have any questions for me about the process that we went through or the coverage?
What we'll do here Barbie, just stand by. I would like to point out Susan Woodton over here, our city treasurer. She is sitting on the meeting tonight and we're glad to have you Susan. This is not an action item but it is discussion and in doing the process, we need a motion in a second to open discussion. So if we can have a motion from someone in a second, we will get on with this and hopefully we can address insurance questions to Barbie first since, I don't know if you need to get somewhere else but that will give you the option of leaving and then we'll hit the budget with Rick if that's okay. So we have a motion in a second please to open discussion.
Mr. Merrimack, sorry, forgot about the microphone. Ms. Merrimack, a motion that we discuss, take action on agenda item number 11.
We have a motion from Byes and we have a second.
Second.
Second from Fredericks. Bert, is your motion, you would? Any questions? I'm sure that seemed crystal clear, right?
Well, it always seems crystal clear to me but I deal with this every day. So, I have, I have learned that I'm not always as clear as I think I am.
Actually-
Bert should have this sheet, by the way. Do you have that?
Yes, sir.
You came in your bag.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Actually, most of the, all the questions I wrote down, you answered. So, I did have a couple of, who is the mail order pharmacy for United Healthcare? Do you have any ideas? Is that-
Oh my gosh.
I can tell you-
It's OptumRx.
It's Optum.
It's Optum.
Yeah.
It's who?
I was like going, oh, it used to be Inovient, but it changed, so it's OptumRx.
Okay, and then, uh, do you have to be pre-certified to see a specialist? Or can you get, can you just go to a specialist?
No, there's no-
There's no pre-cert-
There's no required in this, in this product for them, they can self-direct to a specialist.
Okay, and just for my own information, if you go to a mini clinic, is there a doc, a doctor going to be there?
Most of the time, it's either going to be a nurse practitioner or a physician's assistant, but they're working on-
Oh, really?
...the direction of the physician.
Okay, and that was for my information, that's all I had.
Yeah.
Uh, Paul?
So, this United Healthcare plan, the, I guess, the premiums that the, uh, city employees are going to pay is about thirty percent higher than what they paid last year?
No, actually, the only, the only employees that are going to see an increase in premium, if I remember correctly, and I, because I, I kind of went through this thing and, and I had this panic moment on Tuesday and said, Rick, the people that are currently on this five thousand dollar deductible plan, if we don't offer another one, we're, you know, they're going to, they're going to really get hit hard. And so, we last minute worked that five thousand dollar deductible plan into the mix because we had originally started with just options one, two, and four. Um, but the premium increase from their current five thousand dollar deductible plan to get to that two thousand dollar deductible plan was, was huge. I mean, for, for somebody who had family coverage, it was over a hundred dollars a month, or a hundred dollars a pay period and more than what they were currently paying. So, even though adding that, that extra plan in there and, and doing the five thousand dollar deductible, doing the fifty percent co-insurance, they still are seeing the biggest increase on, you know, if you're, if you're looking at those two plans lining up, you're still seeing the biggest increase on that plan. Um, and I'm, I'm going to pull a number just because I remember it. The employees are currently paying on that, on that five thousand dollar deductible plan with co-pays. They're currently paying about eighty-seven dollars a pay period. And you can see that that premium's gone up to a hundred and thirty-five dollars a pay period. So that's going to be a significant impact, um, for those employees who have employee child coverage. Um, however, it was the lowest premium plan that we could put out there that still gave those employees the option of having a co-pay. They still have the option of paying a little bit less and going to that HSA qualified plan. But they're going to be faced with, if I go to the doctor, if I take my child to the doctor, I'm going to pay out-of-pocket until I satisfy the deductible. I mean, keep in mind that what they pay out-of-pocket is going to be United Healthcare's contracted rate with that physician, which is going to be much less than billed charges. But still, a lot of people just, they like that security of knowing, I'm going to the doctor, it's thirty-five dollars. So, that's why we put that, that plan in there. And, and again, the reason why there's such a big jump in premium on that plan, it's not because of the deductible, it's not because of the co-insurance, it's because that now, all those things plus co-pays have to accumulate and we've lowered the max out-of-pocket by about two thousand dollars on that plan. So, that's, that's kind of what drove that. So we did the best that we could for those people with what the law will allow us to do.
Uh, Barbie, can you go over the number of employees that are on each type of plan currently, generally speaking?
Kill me.
Generally?
The majority of your employees right now, I can tell you, um, the majority of your employees are on the three thousand dollar deductible hundred percent plan that the city pays a hundred percent of the employee premium. Um, you have a handful, uh, I think there's about maybe three or four employees who actually have, carry dependents on that top plan. Uh, the majority of your employees who carry dependents are on that middle five thousand dollar deductible, um, eighty percent plan right now. Uh, that we replaced with the, with the five thousand dollar deductible fifty percent plan. And then we have a handful of employees, uh, who may have single coverage or they may, um, have family coverage as well. But a very small number actually take advantage of that HSA qualified plan. Um, so they, you know, the city pays a lower premium for that and then contributes the savings towards the employee's, um, health savings account. So for instance, this year, I, the numbers are like ninety-three dollars and change difference between the, the city paid plan and the HSA qualified plan. So those employees will get a little over eleven hundred dollars a year into their health savings account. And, you know, the way we kind of sell that is, why pay more for a benefit that you may never use? I mean, if you're, if you're healthy and, and the odds are, if you look back over the last three to five years and you haven't gone to the doctor much, chances are, you may not go to the doctor much this year. It's still a possibility, um, but if you're willing to take the risk, you know, your, your max out-of-pocket's sixty-three fifty, but hey, the city's giving you eleven hundred of that. So it's, it's a good, it's a good deal. And for people that are okay with that risk and that are kind of numbers-driven, they get it and they, they go on to that plan. And I think for the, the majority of the employees who have gone there, like it and will stay.
Any other question? We moved Alex if you can, Alex, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I did have one question. I, I know we've been talking about the various, uh, coverages and options for the employees. And I know when this budget was originally presented to us a couple of weeks ago, we didn't have this as, as a, as a thought in the budget. We were told that the expense, that the costs were going up by fifty-three percent. And so the question I have is, switching to United Healthcare and staying, instead of staying with the fifty-three percent higher cost, what does that do to the actual cost to the city as far as its contribution for the employee part? As well as how does that still have the effect on the, the out-of-pocket premium cost for the employees on the part that, that all employees, of course, the city paid part? That was my question.
So, by switching to United Healthcare, um, instead of seeing a fifty percent rate increase on what you were paying, we actually, I think we reduced the city's contribution by about twenty bucks a month per employee um, by, by going to United Healthcare and also by changing the plan from, the city-sponsored plan, I should say, from the three thousand dollar deductible hundred percent to the two thousand dollar deductible eighty percent. So I think the, the city's current contribution for employees is about three hundred and seventy-eight dollars per month. And we've taken that down to three hundred and sixty-six dollars a month and change. So that lowered. Um, and in, and in doing that, we were able to offer comparable plans to what you have now and still be able to keep the premiums at as close to as possible, um, what the employees are paying down now. Um, for instance, the employees that are on that three thousand dollar deductible hundred percent plan who cover dependents, if they go with, if they go with that second option and cover their dependents, they're actually going to pay less than they're currently paying for their dependent premiums. Or they can opt to go for the, the higher option and, and keep that three thousand dollar deductible hundred percent plan, and they're going to pay a little bit more. Um, same thing on the HSA qualified plan, everything's very close, uh, in, in premium to what the employees are currently paying for their dependents, what they're going to pay going forward. And like I said, again, the only plan that's really feeling a big hit is those four guys that were on the five thousand dollar deductible plan that had a maximum out-of-pocket that now exceeds the limit that the law allows. So, um, you know, basically, we, we kind of go through this, they're cyclical things. Uh, you get with a carrier, you stay with them, you have a couple of bad years of a claims experience, and then they're just not really willing to negotiate with you because they think, you know, we had two bad years in a row. We think we need this rate increase, um, to cover future claims. Uh, if somebody else wants to go on the limb for that, they, you know, they're willing to let the business go. And then you have the carrier like United Healthcare who's hungry, who's trying to build their membership, and they're coming in with competitive rates to try to run your business. And they're going to hope that they come out and get a, get a long-term client by doing that. So it's kind of like a cer- I feel like I circled your question, but did it-
No, you did answer, thank you, yes.
Anything else?
That's all.
Cindy?
What's the difference between the employee plus children plan and the employee plus family plan?
Employee, there's four tiers, employee only, employee plus spouse, employee plus children only, and employee family would be spouse and children.
Oh, oh, I see, okay. And the other question, I'm not sure if, maybe Rick can answer this one. When you told us about this plan, this is the new plan, and you said the city wanted to go to from one hundred to eighty percent? I, I wasn't quite sure what you meant by that.
It's the co-insurance, so, um-
We were paying one hundred percent of their-
No. What he's, what he's saying is, the city, the city's currently paying for the richest plan that's offered, which is a three thousand dollar deductible, one hundred percent co-insurance plan.
A hundred percent of that plan currently?
Yeah. So, as of October one, the cities, the plan that the city's going to pay a hundred percent of the employee premium on is now a two thousand dollar deductible, eighty percent co-insurance plan. So when Rick was talking about a hundred versus eighty, he was talking about the co-insurance level of the plan. Does that make sense? If we, if you want, we can throw this slide back up and I can show you. Do you want to see this slide?
Sure, let me see it again.
Okay, so if you look at option one, the plan that the city pays a hundred percent for right now looks very similar to option one. So the employees have to meet a three thousand dollar deductible and then the plan picks up a hundred percent of expenses after the deductible's satisfied. So that's where Rick is talking about a hundred percent plan. The new plan that the city's sponsoring and paying a hundred percent, paying the employee's premium on, at no cost to the employee, is now Plan Two, which has a lower deductible of two thousand dollars. But, once the two thousand is satisfied, there's a cost share between the employee and the insurance carrier. The employee's going to pay twenty percent, the carrier's going to pay eighty percent until we get to that out-of-pocket limit.
Okay, okay.
Is that, is that good now? Okay, great.
Uh, Bert, any follow-up?
Uh, dental and vision's with you also.
Yes.
Forgot about that thing. Dental and vision's with you also, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and these are comparable to last year, right?
Um, as a matter of fact, um, the dental and vision is remaining with Humana.
Oh, it is?
The vision premium was in rate guarantee. So, these are the exact same rates that the employees are currently paying. The dental plan came back initially with, I think, about an eight percent rate increase. Um, however, I was able to go back and negotiate with Humana, we got five percent knocked off of this. So, um, the employees are paying, you know, probably less than a dollar a month more, uh, for employee only coverage and, and they got a very small increase on dental, uh, by remaining with Humana.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we looked at bundling it with United Healthcare.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, this, this vision rate of five sixty-eight that we have with, uh, with Humana was close to ten bucks with United Healthcare.
Oh.
And the dental, um, the dental rate was a few bucks higher as well for employee only, so it just seemed to make sense to stay where we were. Um, that was one of the things too, when I walked in the meeting this afternoon, I said something about, they go, oh, we're moving to United. And I was like, yeah, and they go, darn, now I'm going to have to find a new dentist. And I'm like, no, you don't, because your dental plan's staying with Humana, so that was applauded.
Okay.
We're good there.
Thank you.
Did you?
Yes.
Any follow-up? Alex? Cindy, any follow-up for Barbie? Thank you, Barbie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good job.
Okay, now we'll get into, uh, discussion on, uh, budget numbers and, uh, any comments you have. Bert, it's your motion, so, uh, you're up on this one, so please.
Okay, give me a second, please. I just, uh, had a quick question, uh. Last year, I think, I, I, last year we gave everybody at least one step, a one-step raise, is that correct? And then some of the, some of the employees actually got two to three steps, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, I'd just like to say something about the, the stepping grade deal. It, I know this is not an obligation, it's just a guide. And, uh, I just want to put that out there for our information. We, we're not obligated to it, it's just something that guides us with the, with the process. I still have not made up my mind on the, on option one or two yet. Um, uh, it, we still have what, one more meeting or two more meetings?
One more.
Yeah, so, uh, that's all I had to say.
To do the, the maintenance on the, um, the new roads of the annex, is that included in builds and grounds? Or is that just part of the public works, schedule of work?
That is included in the public works, uh, portion of the budget.
Okay. And we won't need any new equipment to-
No.
We can do that with existing equipment that we have?
Yes, and we're currently going out for bid for a new landscape contractor. And so we've asked them to bid those out as well to see what that cost will be. But we do have the ability to do that in-house, um, if needed. It just depends on what those costs come back at on, uh, and those bids will come in tomorrow.
If, if they can provide it at a better rate, would you still need to hire the public works employee?
Yes.
Okay.
Ed? Cindy? Nothing? Alex?
I don't either, I, I'm still, uh, uh, like, uh, Councilmember Byes, I'm still concerned about the stepping grade part, but I haven't decided which of the two options were presented was the best. I still need more study on that, I know we have more time on it, so, thank you.
Bert, anything else?
No, sir.
You're done? Alex? Okay, there being no more discussion on the, uh, budget, item number eleven. We will be going into a short closed session. And this closed session, uh, is in accordance with Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultations with attorney. In addition to the matters listed below, any matters scheduled for open session can, may be discussed in closed session as appropriate and authorized by law. Five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultations with attorney regarding Continental Homes of Texas LP versus City of Helotus et al. And the Texas Association of Builders et al versus the City of Helotus et al. And we will adjourn into closed session from here at eight oh six. We should not be long, I would like to say, there will be no action items, uh, following the closed session and no discussions, so we will be coming back from closed session and adjourning the meeting. You're welcome to stay as long as you like, and, uh, we'll be back. Well, I should say as long as you like until we adjourn the meeting. We don't want you spending the night. Yeah, right.
It was over by the end.
Yeah.
Yep. That's all I'm gonna tell you.
I got a report.
I know, so do I. I'm gonna go and watch it.
Weren't they, weren't they big after five?
Uh, South Carolina's rated number nine, A&M number twenty-one.
That'll change.
Uh, easily. Now I don't know how far down A&M will go, but South Carolina will probably drop out of the top twenty.
What happened?
They never lost, right?
Do you wanna know this story?
No, no, I saw it earlier.
They were up by quite a bit. They got up by a little bit more.
They'll, they'll get in the top twenty.
Oh, yeah, no question about that. The problem is the re- huh?
They're already in the top two. I think they're twenty-one.
No, they're, they're twenty-one or twenty-two.
Well, there's AP and UPI.
Okay, we are back in, uh, session at, uh, eight forty-eight. And we were, uh, in closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-one. Consultations with attorney. In addition to the matters, uh, listed below, uh, we were able to, uh, discuss, uh, anything else that was, uh, appropriate and authorized by law. Five-five-one point zero-seven-one consultation with attorney regarding Continental Homes of Texas LP versus the City of Lotus Ed Al and the Texas Association of Builders Ed Al versus City of Lotus Ed Al. Uh, no action was taken in the closed session, uh, so that, uh, brings us back out here. And our agenda is complete, so if there are no objections from counsel, uh, we will adjourn this meeting. Any objections? We are adjourned at eight forty-nine.